All right, it's four o'clock, I'm gonna call this regularly scheduled Carpenter County School District Two Board Trustees meeting to order. Uh, but our honored guests, Mrs. Copeland, please take this to the pleasure of leading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the holy, gorgeous land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second. Moving second to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, um, first item is superintendent recognition. I just wanted to, I realized that you're working past the June board meeting. I just felt like it would be better to do it in a school, I mean, I think that's, uh, the reason you've done, we've done, um, very, is to help educate the children. So I feel like it's better to do that at school than the last meeting at Central Office. And also, I'm aware it would be, having the U-Haul parked outside of that meeting, and so, if it's stormy weather, you might already be gone. So, I just wanted this chance for each of us to have something to say, and then we've got a little presentation that, the shop teacher Mike helped put together. Cassie.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for all of your work for our district. And you set the bar really high, and I think that really piqued light, um, that's really key for our new superintendent. Said about all the things that shaped up our district and, um, what, what we're looking for. It's been a delight working with you and with you, and Mrs. Copeland, best.
Actually, I'm always, you know, been on the floor now for seven years, and you've been honest with that all time. You're always professional, and you don't get flustered very often. It's amazing, you know, we have been conversations later about what you know is, what's going on behind the scenes, that we have no idea about, you know, the reality of being an education. So, I just think you've been an exemplary role model for the district, for the entire time we're here. I have really enjoyed working with you.
Uh, to be honest, I'm kinda glad to see you gone. Seen all the texts, and, 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 and. So hopefully Darren's got a little bit better taste in dealing with you guys. No, in all honesty, you know, Jim, class is, is a very, very important one. When I think about the topics that I've dealt with, with you, at the board sessions, um, board workshops. You know, I always felt that we had the class, class access through today, so, thank you for that. And also, Melissa, thank you for all the rib eggs, and all the laughing, and stuff with her around you, so we're gonna miss a little of you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's, it's bittersweet, definitely, to be missing you, and of course, for students that are in those settings and doing their job. But it's been a pleasure, definitely, working with you and learning from you, and your experience, I think, has brought a contour to our district and helped us get better, and hopefully it'll just give us an opportunity for our kids to succeed as they come on. So I really, really appreciate all of the support.
Yeah, so I, I stand for your leadership, there are ways about, um, I think, well, being a very classy person. Being very involved in every aspect of the district, and very present. I appreciated that greatly, and again, you saw us through one of those challenging times of education, and the dedication, that's great. So, I appreciate very, very, very your service, and your shooting of us, and I actually got very, very blessed to do it.
Diddled with what everybody else has said, but, I ran up several incidents that I, and I was impressed with. And the fact that, you know, we made it known that we wanted to co-act as superintendent, that we were searching for one. And you anticipate problems before we even know it's a problem, and have the solution figured out to present to us. You have made our life as a board rather easy. And, uh, I, and the specific incident was when we were looking for a principal after Larry Ewing retired. And, you know, we were going through the process, and I was on that committee and everything, and there was one guy that was really good, and the rest were eh, we're not sure. And we, we called the guy, or you called the guy, immediately after we made our decision, and he had taken a job elsewhere. Immediately, you come back and tell us the bad news, that the guy we chose isn't gonna be here. But you already had the solution to that figured out, because you had talked, obviously, to Darren about being a mutual principal secondary and elementary. So you already had the solution before we even knew there was a problem. And that's, that's what was very impressive, and, and you did that time to time. So you've made our life as a board seem thinking. Listen. All right.
I agree, I think you made us look pretty darn good, which I appreciate, because I think we've had a pretty easy job talking to other school board members throughout the district, follows their complaints, and everything going on. We don't really do a whole lot, like, the whole lot, I'm like, oh, that's just what he does, so, thank you for always leading us well, and for everything, and I think you've done a really good job unifying the whole district, which I think is very important to be a united front, we can do anything as a united front, so I greatly appreciate that, and I appreciate all the years you've put up with.
And Mrs. Copeland, I appreciate you always filling out all my forms for me and having them ready, so I just have the site and the setup figured out. I'm thinking about it, I don't know what I'm gonna do with my kids' medicine at school anymore, but, maybe just hide it in their bags. But we greatly appreciate you, you were wonderful at taking care of everything, you ran it like a well-oiled machine and grabbing it.
Thank you.
Jim, I thank you for the education with new board members, uh, not just throwing us to the wolves, I feel like you've taught me a lot through, uh, your patience. It's always amazed me how you are able to keep your calm in a storm. Uh, you never get overwhelmed, so I, I do appreciate that, and it's made, uh, it's made my tight-knit board enjoyable. I don't feel, uh, worthless anymore, I kind of feel, so, but I do appreciate you, and I wish you maybe better have the best on your next adventure. Thank you.
So, with Mike's help, which I really appreciate, um, tech teachers got together, maybe rubbing, wondering if it's a bowl or something. I said, hey, we gotta get something that has a panther, tiger, and minor eyes, and, uh, something a little more customized from our shops, so, that's really nice, thank you. You know, I tried to think, well, if they're gonna give you a flyer, this, this was never a good buy.
That is really, really nice, thank you very much. And, and, you know, for my eight years here, and my last really superintendent position, you know, after, I think it's been thirty-five years that I've had superintendent, forty-five at Public Education, and, you know, I couldn't have thought of a better place to, to have my last, you know, stint at. You know, when I came, I was a little apprehensive, I've never had a minor board before, you know, that's a lot of people prepared in what I'm, I'm used to. And, uh, it, it really does take a mutual effort for a board to be a superintendent, decent also. And you get to be a pretty good actor, you know, be a little calm most of the time, there are times when I'm not very calm under pressure, unless it gets to here. You can say that, but it has really done a pleasure, but this is such a great district, with great parents, great kids, a great board, great staff, and a lot, a lot of things to be thankful for that you have here in Carpenter two, and couldn't find a prettier place to be. And if, you know, my kids were here, we'd be staying here for sure, but, uh, but thank you for everything, and especially your support, and, uh, very appreciative of that over years, and a great principal staff, I enjoy it too, and I'm a little better, so, all right.
Well, say my same thing.
Thank you. We, we enjoy every bit of, it's been awesome, believe with, with only good memories and good thoughts. Thank you all, very much.
And Darren, did they give you a spot?
Okay, uh, moving on to business of the meeting. Correspondents.
We just got a letter from, uh, WSBA, kind of addressing the whole letter, kind of the old nest that they had at the National School Board, sending that letter out about kind of being critical of parents, taking school leaders or whatever. That created quite an issue there, in fact, the superintendent, Beth Jackson, her husband, who was the Kansas version of Brian Barber, I guess, has now got that position at the National School Association. So, uh, it caused quite a shakeup at, at that level also, but this is just a letter kind of explaining, you know, what the SBA stands, hoping for that.
Um, item five, resignation for hiring A.
All right, well, this was a little bit of a surprise, this came in last week, totally didn't know anybody was, Russ was thinking about this or that. Kurt, if you can read the letter, but Russ Williams is a retired actor, thirty-four years with Carpenter two, and forty years overall, he's sent this letter, so, he's done a lot of great work, really appreciate his efforts, pulling all of the activities together, and the northern end, not to mention his teaching, art teaching, some people forget that he also is really the teacher of art, or AGM, I think he does, too. Anyway, so, he thinks the whole thing to accept his letter, Russell.
Chairman, I am moved to be accept the resignation of Russ William, effective at the end of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, thanking for his dedicated service. And I do believe that he is the last of the Medicine Bowl High School teachers. Shut that school down, I think he's the last one.
Second. Uh, it has been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Russ William, effective at the end of the school year, and thanking for his years service to the district in multiple locations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, moving on to the more positive, uh, news that AGM and Mr. Priest got last week, Jordan Jansky, the science teacher, is resigning to take a position in Casper, which is, I think, where his family has been, and he's kind of been back in pull, so, we knew he was looking, but we just didn't know he had that position until I spoke to him.
Chairman, I will be accept the resignation of Jordan Jansky, effective at the end of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, thanking for his service.
Second.
Uh, seconded to accept the resignation of Jordan Jansky, effective for, in the school year, thanking for his service for the district. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, question carries.
Item C is asking a board to consider offering a contract to Mara Jacobson for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, her assignment will be the interregionalist at Canlin. Think she's got ties to the county community passions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer a contract to Mara Jacobson for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, current assignment in human interregionalist.
It's been moved and seconded to offer the contract to Mara Jacobson for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, assignment being a Canlin interregionalist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, question carries.
Item D is to consider offering a contract to Stephanie Scott for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, she will be replacing Ms. Nancy Muntzinger, who's re.
Chairman, I move we offer a contract to Stephanie Scott for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, current assignment AGM Business Director.
Moved and seconded to offer the contract to Stephanie Scott for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, pending certification, her assignment AGM Business Director. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, question carries.
Item E, consider offering a contract to Sherry Nottwell for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, she will be taking the special education and helping position at Saratoga High School. And she also has some ties to the district, I think she's a parent sister.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer a contract to Sherry Nottwell for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, current assignment as a special education.
Uh, it's been seconded to offer the contract to Sherry Nottwell for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year pending certification, current. Chairman, as an H, special education. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, question carries.
Item F, consider hiring, consider approving the hiring of Kristen Tootner for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as the district school nurse.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the hiring of Kristen Tootner for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as district school nurse.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve the hiring of Kristen Tootner for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year as district school nurse. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, question carries.
Item G, consider offering a contract to Bailey Jackson for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, her assignment will be AGM Science teacher.
Chairman, I move that we offer a contract to Bailey Jackson for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year pending certification, current site will be AGM Science.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to offer the contract to Bailey Jackson for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year pending certification, current assignment being AGM Science. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, question carries.
And H, consider offering a contract to Cruz Escapito Peridondo for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, current assignment will be AGM A.
Offer a contract to Cruz Escapito Peridondo for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, current assignment AGM A.
It's been moved and seconded to offer the contract to Cruz Escapito Peridondo for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending certification, current assignment AGM A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, question carries, that does appear to be higher.
My report's fairly short, I'm wrong, we're four students from last month, you can see those numbers, have ten of those, so, you see your long spot, make sure you look that, and now you can figure that out. And then just a reminder also, the summer working times will be six P.M., in July. Oh, that's right, I, we had a donation. Donation, Dr. Chris Williams donated his sixteen hundred dollar stipend for helping to coach to the Saratoga High School football team, so, I'm recognizing that for that.
That's honorable, thank you. Okay, uh, Robin, you have a, it's an end of the year report.
This is just the data that I went through, and I'll send it to you one, and pass it on. So it's, I broke up, so this is just for the special education students, um, and at each school, and then you can see the Y-top, ELA, and math, and then also, um, dibbles for our elementary schools. With the special education, um, with most of our kids, we're really more concerned with growth than with proficiency. We obviously want them to be proficient, but we don't think weaknesses in certain areas, that's why they have an IDP in a special education. So, um, we really are looking at growth, so I split it up, and the kids that were proficient or advanced are in the blue part of the pie. I didn't look at growth for them, because really, once they're at that stage, they're probably not getting services in that area. So, um, they're probably in the regular education classroom, and then we look at growth through other reports. So, I'm looking at the other part, that is not the blue part on this, um, and really, we want to be looking at high growth, because if a student is multiple grades below, if they're just with the average growth, they're never going to catch up to where we want them to be. So we really want all of our special ed kids to be in that high growth area, so that we're closing the gap. Um, in some areas, we really work quite a bit better, um, we were seeing a lot more growth with our, um, math in the special education side of things than we are in ELA and reading. Um, in reading, we're seeing average growth, which is good, the kids are still growing, they're not getting further behind, um, but that's not gonna bridge the gap either, so we maybe need to be taking a look into that. Um, one other thing with this that you'll notice is, um, especially on the Y-top, there's, that there's not any growth, and that's just if they weren't here last year, I didn't have any place to compare it to, so that's basically, I mean, that moved in. So yeah, just kind of, overall, it's looking like, in our, all of our elementary schools, especially, math is growing a lot more than reading. We do target math a little bit more, um, through special education than the reading, because there's a lot more, um, interventions, and with, in the regular classroom, in reading, it seems like they do a lot more reading groups, where we're in the classroom helping with that, where with math, we're doing a lot more targeted instruction, um, outside of the regular education.
So, if I'm looking like at the Saratoga one, it's front page, so it's easy, so, the blue on the top, English, Language Arts, the proficient advanced, sixty-eight percent of special education is proficient advanced, and so, yeah, and then there's less growth, like you said, than in the math, but they're still better overall, yeah, English. But there's more growth.
More growth.
And so like the northern elementary schools is the same thing, you got way more proficient advanced in English, but more growth in math, because they have more. Our Canlin is different.
Yeah.
Because they have, they're more proficient at math.
Which is surprising to me.
So, yeah, they're a foot block from there.
Yep, and of course, I'm just speculating on this, but I do think that's because even before a kid is identified for special education, they are getting that, that reading support through Title I services, or within the classroom where we don't have that support really for math. So they're not, I don't know, special ed unfortunately is sometimes a kind of way to fail in the system, um, for a learning disability, where with reading, we don't have to wait for that, we can give them more interventions through Title I just as we go. So they're already just more proficient in that area, because they're getting those services. I don't know, that's my take on it, I don't know if there's, if that's true or not, but.
Robin, once again, Amy.
That's just that they didn't have growth because they were new, so I couldn't compare them to last year's scores.
Oh, okay, no, we're too appreciative of growing because of the fact you had nothing to measure.
Yes, yes, so if you'll notice for dibbles, there's very few of those, I think there was one school for a kid that just moved in at the end of the year, but otherwise, the dibble scores, I could compare it to the beginning of the year, because it's the, the goal moves up, where with Y-top, it's there being, if they're an eighth grader, they're being tested on eighth grade stuff from the beginning to the end, it's, the target really never changes. Where with dibbles, it does. So there's definitely some areas, I am, I have this broke out, but I'm gonna give to the teachers by student, so they can look at each individual student and see if what they're doing is working, and then they can go through and kind of tweak based on that student's program, and we know where we can target a little bit more, so, if you are interested in that, I can share that with, um, picking out some of the names and stuff, but I will share a lot with the teachers too, so they have a goal for next year to kind of work for.
So is there, for special ed kids, is there a goal on, say, all right, there's this many that are proficient and high growth, like is it eighty percent, seventy percent, seventy?
They are changing that, so up until last year, if they kept the same hundred percent proficiency goal as everyone else, which doesn't make sense, right? So now the WDE is working to take kind of an average of the last few years, and then set a different goal, and it was much lower, I wanna say they had it set, um, I guess I don't even remember what they set it at, but we actually were above that goal in both areas last year. Um, they're gonna change that, just kind of take for the next three years, it's gonna be kind of a moving scale, until they can figure out what's going to make sense for special education, and then they'll set that target.
Yeah.
And a hundred percent doesn't really make sense at all.
Even over at school level, it's not.
Yep, yep, so I was pretty happy WDE actually took that into consideration and thought, oh, let's work for our kids instead of just this pie in the sky. Yeah. So, any other questions, or if you're looking through this later, sorry, I didn't get it to beforehand, um, if you're looking through it later and have questions, so if you can call me or email me.
Is there, like, for, for your uses, dibbles versus Y-top preference, so look at one and the other?
Um, I, dibbles for our younger kids for sure, because that's the specific skills they're working on, is fluency and decoding and phonemic awareness and that kind of thing. I find Y-top is kind of difficult, especially our kids that are like ADHD kids, which we have a lot of, because the test is three and a half hours long. They can't focus for more than ten minutes without having some kind of intervention or break, or sensory need or something, and so then, that just gets really long. So I'm not sure how true of a field we get, but our scores were actually pretty high, so, must be.
Do we, Robin, and this is kind of, might be a little bit of a broad spoken question, but, so, when the kids come in and they take their, their Y-top test, and then they come back and they retake it, and then we measure the growth, do we, is there any way to incentivize those kids to who has the biggest growth gets this, or can we do that, or?
Yeah, I think within the classroom, I think it's more on individual teachers that they kind of set, like I know one group of kids I was just working with, we just had a meeting for, it was at Saratoga Elementary School, and their teacher offered them a technology hour or something if they had an X amount of growth, so.
So there is that, because it's kind of, you know, when you first start school, it's kind of new, by this time, you're ready for it to be done, and you're just.
Yeah, yeah, especially like junior high kids, yeah. So I, I, I do think the teachers do a really good job of giving them rewards, but trying not to make it quite so stressful for them, because that's a risk to if they put too much on it, but, from most of the classrooms, I think the teachers are doing it, so.
There's, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Robin. Okay, uh, Mr. Manning.
Good, Mr. Chairman, to the board, my report is attached as usual, I think I was giving an ultimate of an A to these, where it's possible for the sake of their, you know, exact future, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, moving, moving pretty quick here, for, incredible, this is a little, again, I would give. Uh, I don't think, maybe not necessarily go into this so much, just it looks like I'm a little bit further down in the agenda, but we made some decisions with, with our reviews, we're both secondary ELA, or I should say six through eight ELA, and then secondary math. One thing I, I don't know if I pointed out to you in the past, but, uh, just to point out to you in case a lot of you that weren't involved in the process, but do we look at six through eight ELA, and find a replacement nine through twelve, that's a piece new basically, that curriculum is created by teachers, added to, and subtracted, and things like that, so you can't just buy a set, put it in place, and it works as effective. So you can't just buy a set, put it in place and it works as effective. So we reviewed that, but we never considered the possibility of lines updated, just tossed in place with that. And then also, I talked with each remaining math teachers in the districts. We've got some that are going in a different direction, but what to do for pre-dupus and doctors, very upper level math. And for now, we're just going to continue using what we already have in place with C D and math. Just because as a pretty rare class, pretty rare classes to offer. And the teachers are honestly kind of type of examples, things like that. So they're comfortable with what they're teaching so far. I checked with both teachers that are remaining. They're comfortable with what they're teaching. We'll get to that for a group replacement eventually. But for now, that's staying in place. District assessment system update, I gave you a little update about some of the testing. I hadn't had a chance to really go through extensively. We got some ups and downs with the results of that. So I hope to do that some time in the near future. We've got some areas of pride, concerns, I think, as we have before in the past. So I'll put together information reports for our principals and then once it's actually helped to release, we'll have that information available for other individuals as well. But we've got interventions lined up for next year, so we will address what we need to address, continue to support what we're doing well at. We also had some Y top monitoring, we were randomly selected for Y top monitoring to see how we're performing and actually to build up, giving the Y top test. It included two different parts, there was the desktop monitoring process and there was an actual physical visit. Six or seven schools achieved a hundred percent on the desktop monitoring process. I wouldn't say who, but we just had one per school that forgot or I should say maybe a building coordinator or so councilor forgot some paperwork to get done, that was it. With the actual physical visits, we got, think a little bit on some very minor things. But none of our schools achieved less than ninety percent of that process, which is pretty impressive, especially because I talked with the individual that came for the physical monitoring afterwards. She told me some horror stories about how schools and districts essentially are doing so wrong that their results are going to be void as a decision status, which is really bad for the W D E to say, your testing doesn't count because that's not going to help with their S P Rs, their school performance ratings. So if anything, thank you to the teachers that are taking the training seriously, the building coordinators that are putting time and effort into that. Thank you to everyone that's involved with Y top testing, make sure we're applying to what the state's asking. And they have been increasing their requirements and what they're looking for for us specifically here in terms of administering testing properly. So I think we're in good debt for that. Other work, every time this year, we do an annual needs assessment to just talk about what our big focus is for P D next year with our teachers, our staff members in general. We don't always get the greatest amount of people that actually respond to it. This year, we had forty-one people that took part in after two weeks of that being out there, which is actually higher than usual. Kind of strong information that we got back. S E L, social emotional learning, the topic that's been on people's minds quite a bit, especially since the pandemic. We've been kind of winding down, but how to best address what are the social, the emotional needs of the kids to give them support beyond these macro dynamics? And so the people that responded, fifty-one point two percent of those individuals said that social emotional learning is kind of their critical growth for next year. And another seventeen point one percent responded in favor of M T S S, which stands for multi-tiered systems of support, which includes S E L, M T S S is academics and S E L. So a lot of our teachers are saying we need help supporting our kids with kind of their mental health, how they're performing on a day-to-day basis. Like Jayden was talking about earlier today, the old cell phone thing, you know, you've got a kid that's sitting in class and their cell phone goes off in their pocket, they don't even know how. That vibration is kind of getting them thinking about things other than what my teacher is talking about right now. It's the same idea with S E L. We've got kids that are getting bullied, P T's with their boyfriend, girlfriend broke up with them and they don't know how to handle that. And there's some classes, just someone thrown on about chemistry here, social studies or something, they're coming and focused so much on that as opposed to what do I need to do? In my opinion, it's sort of going through that. So that's something that we definitely want to take seriously for the teachers. We're looking at some initial plans, just trying to get some resources together, at a piece of really quick and easy for them to start at the end of the year. We have a guest speaker come in that's going to talk about trauma and who won't care about students. How to deal with students that are dealing with traumas that they can't identify and have no idea of how to actually deal with themselves. And we're going to consider kind of a long, lengthy process about looking at other research processes here to be for S E L, trying to find an appropriate self-intervention program or support of some kind, to implement that ourselves to help these students out who are not just the academics type of students. So taken for that because that's going to be quite a lot to go through all that process, but it's necessary. And then, oh, I also mentioned that we have a meeting on, and maybe those teachers just about that third topic and about our next step toward, but I was just like, who will apply? Who is the first step in that process? Other work I mentioned, computer science program, work with the teachers that are going to be teaching computer science next year just to make sure we've got all the things in place for what they need. We have our annual stakeholders meeting this Wednesday at four thirty at the district office and soon. As a welcome to participate in that, if you would like to, we'd be happy to have you. And then I had a recent curriculum director association meeting. I had some really important things about what's coming, but I've talked about the past couple of years. And then just a tip of work to get ready to start the next school year. And then, which Johnson's report is attached as well. Again, she's done a number of trainings and really the bulk of her work in that condition. And she's been doing it for student groups in different schools, including up north where she's been helping with the end of the year testing, getting that done for our Dibbles testing for those students, those elementary students. These trainings are going to pay off with big time next year. Talk about those intervention positions that we hired for. We originally were planning for five or six, right now we've only hired three. I don't know how many more we're going to give, so that is dependent on some of the situations we've got going on. Like I've talked with schools who get to ship people around. But if anything, I'm sure that ships are really going to help move the direction forward of some of these interventions. Well, she's done, full value from that to focusing on learning some critical trainings that I think are necessary. So that is an intervention, start working with schools next year, get a hold of them and what they need to be able to help students. Those are all about reports and interventions.
I have a comment. You guys must have sold the Y top monitoring really well. My daughter came home and she's like, we got selected to monitor and to do this. I didn't know about this, but she thought it was something a lot better to do.
Yeah, that came right, they were for our spring break and everything was due during our spring break. So it was kind of like, hey, let's get this done really quick before we all go on vacation.
Well, she was excited. She, that was a great thing.
Great. Glad we, thanks for staying positive, everybody.
I have seven, audience, a couple come in. Seeing none. We do not have any unfinished business at this time. We will move on to new business. Item nine, A, we need to consider the preliminary budget.
This is the preliminary budget for the rep board and you have, should have a copy of it attached. You can see their revenue expenditures are three eighteen, forty-eight, and ten. All preliminary budgets are past the May of that. They're finalizing the rest for July.
Mr. Chairman, approve the, approve the preliminary budget for the rep board.
Second. Second item to approve the preliminary budget for the rep board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Both. Chair is, and now both is.
Is this something for the boces more?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the boces preliminary budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'm second to approve budget for boces for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Further discussion? I do have a question. So in the line item budget, there does have a transfer to region five boces.
Yeah, that's the point of our, we trained the four half year and we spent, and we transferred that for twenty percent to the five.
And that will spend the budget if it's approved.
Right.
This is preliminary.
Yeah, I just want to point out that it's, yeah.
Basically, basically. Yeah, basic what your preliminary budgets do is allow us to spend then from July first until the third of January one. When we have the final budget.
That's a good clarification.
Yeah. It's not by any means final, so.
I have seen the preliminary.
You can see those numbers there, you can ask Sally how, if you have any questions, please.
You would be approving the preliminary budgets for the general fund and all other funds that you see are estimated funds available. So we ultimately approve the preliminary budget of twenty-four million, one million, five thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the district's preliminary one, twenty-three budget.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
What's that?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, that's my, I was like.
I'm sorry. I apologize if there was there.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second. Okay, and the move is second to grasp the preliminary budget for current students who are two. Preliminary budget for one, four hundred and nine thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye. And D is the mail luggage donation request.
This is a request for region five, I'm down there, I mean, they always, when they generally request point two, we historically give them point one. That's the regulation. Matt, just coming out of the boces.
But the board, the school board is the one who approves the board.
And that was like fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, fifteen to seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I move we continue the Y one.
Excuse me, just.
Okay, the move is second to continue to contribute point one mail to the region by boces now of our plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Both. Okay, this is about the curriculum, approving.
This is the amplified curriculum that has chosen the committee process for grades six through eight, E L A. No one was here to answer questions. I know a couple of you came and picked about, and looked through some of it. It's been available. I can't remember how many was on the committee, but no one can answer any questions about the process or the curriculum.
So on the quote, it has, it says six-year license. Is that for like online support you get for six years?
Combination of online support and a lot of these companies now are transitioning towards consumable textbooks. They realize that people are retired, they're not buying consumables when you just use textbooks. So they're cooperating together to have them. But I mean, the price really isn't that bad considering some other options. So that's what that would refer to.
About this, that's just so clear, that, that is the price for all the textbooks and everything. At the end of six years, you're supposed to not use your textbooks anymore.
Theoretically, if the textbook hasn't been updated, we could buy additional symbols. But then a lot of companies are also updating their copyrights so that we can get in the six years. Oh, well, if you buy the next version, it might not align with what we're teaching. The good thing with this though is that we won't have whole hard copy textbooks sitting in the classroom that we bought six years ago. We can bring in versions, so theoretically, we should just be able to continue on with that if we choose to after six years, if that makes sense.
The, I will, I will mention that the committee was overwhelmingly positive about this potential option. It came down to two choices, probably be kind of deadlock for a while, but we ended up coming down to a vote and it was eighty, twenty. Eighty percent in favor of amplified E L A. It was nice to see, especially with a smaller committee, because it wasn't as much of a standard as true to that.
Did you have board members and parents and teachers all part of the committee?
We had parents, teachers, we had one board member for E L A.
Mr. Chairman, approve that we purchased the amplified for grades six through eight, English, Language Arts.
Who the second to approve purchase of the amplified, English, Language Arts, take over grade six through eight. All in favor, say aye. Both, both you cares. I know about the math.
Same thing really with math, the one difference, well, we're approving six and the eighth grade math with a revenue which would be the same and also Algebra, Geometry, Algebra two. I think Noel mentioned we pulling out of the very new senior, her mother, of calculus and so on. So they should have said that.
Yeah, but these companies, when they put together curriculums like this, especially our height in high school and A G. Algebra, Geometry, Algebra two, those are the sets that they sell. They don't go beyond that typically. So they'll have independent books, independent publishers essentially that will also quotes for copies. We've gotten this clearly considered that in the initial, and then the original, to look at other pieces. But yeah, because partly I think as the teachers are a little exhausted from the process of going here and then also because of their comfort level, they've seen this trend with the pieces and the low enrollments for those two classes. And that they're okay with keeping those for now and just focusing on the bulk of this where all students are going through A G A. Not all students are going through pre-dupus or pre-doos to get like A G S.
So that's why this is basically quite expensive because it's six years of classes.
Yep, and I want to thank Sally for not trying to break my legs or anything like that. I made a mistake with this process. When I got the initial quotes, the sales rep actually made a mistake. He did not quote me for one of the grades for any books other than one hobby, so the cost went up. So originally Sally told me keep it at seventy thousand, you know, higher than that. Both these together are just under seventy-five thousand, so I've been able to them down a little bit on the price, which can be a little bit happier and a little less bad about the fact that I made a mistake. Did I needed to ask Sally for a room? So thank you, Sally.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Pearson, Stavis, Division, Algebra, Math for grades six through eight, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra two.
Move second to approve the Pearson Division Math for grade six through eight and the Algebra, Geometry and Algebra two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Both, both you cares. Thank you very much, all for leading that process. Obviously, with any job, having the right tools in the hand of your staff makes a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item ten, the consent agenda. Move second to approve the consent. Move seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Both. Opposed? And who cares? Okay, item eleven A, treasurer's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your general fund balance at the end of April was five million, two hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. You can see there your revenue and bills and payroll and your expenses, uh, for the general fund. In section two, you have your major receipts from the school foundation and treasure. And state of mind, retirement reimbursement, that's for the months of October through April. Um, you know, we have to submit, we could just submit that once a year, but I'm trying to do it every quarter, which I miss, so there we are. But that's why that's so much. Usually it's about fifteen thousand a month is what we put about. In section three, your, where your money is invested at the various rates, um, more consistent between Y O star and the Wyoming government investment fund, which is, uh, we did. Do you have any questions regarding your general fund?
When do we stop getting the Y O?
The foundation payment will get a half of, we just received our half payment for May. We will get another payment until August.
Because of F Y I, we talked about a three-point eight million carryover to five-two.
Right.
Not getting any more.
Five-two, we're, we're basically done and, and you have a two million dollar payroll in June to pay out your teaching contracts and, and you have June, July, and August to look at you, maybe teachers. So, um, so that your tax revenue is large in June and we had, um, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollar tax payment in May, which is a lot. To fund the membership. Okay, any other questions regarding your general fund? Um, page two, are your other funds, your grant funds, your preparations between, um, April of twenty-two and April of twenty-one payrolls? Uh, your sponsorship accounts or revenue scholarships, issue plan, or pay for? Your employee benefit fund, your lunch fund, activity funds. We talked about the, um, employee benefit fund for anything for your, um, personal base. That would be the fund that we would use. Oh, we have one person remaining to pay on the early retirement benefit and he'll be done this, this year, I think by September. Um, he'll be done. That account also has a minimum balance on it, which is ten thousand dollars and they're charged me as a service fee. So you may see a center under there just to give us about that ten thousand dollar number that I'm in service with. And otherwise, do you have any questions regarding the revenue? And then any questions regarding the summaries, revenue, and expenditures that you receive from the process? Mr. Chairman, I approve.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the committee on math was Sally. She answered her questions. I move we approve the following rules. General fund, two hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and forty cents. Library fund, forty-three thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Engineering fund, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Appreciation reserve, eighty-two thousand, fifty dollars. Uh, lunch fund, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred seven dollars and forty-six cents. Cancer activity account, six thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Cancer activity account, seven thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Certain total schools activity account, fourteen thousand, ninety-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. Or total of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
The move is seconded to approve the bills and again total of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Most who cares? All right, June bills committee will be Miller, Condon, and Wester. Taking items from the board, uh, section twelve, A, review board governance leadership policy tab two point zero. Congratulations. Thoughts, comments? Okay, uh, moving on to item P, student discipline.
We got this, uh, kind of interesting, uh, guy doing research and we looked. Who still had a policy on the books, who actually used it and so on. Realize it was in there. We've not used it for much longer. It's gonna be out in here and it's just hasn't been taken out or revised since it was last reviewed, that policy. So I just, because we're not using it, so. Just thinking since you noticed it and when you were on our list, if it still had any policy, then we would want to look at that policy and check that.
Seems like a good idea. Have to use the office phone to call parent down, have them administer themselves on the screw round. I can do that. Yeah, that was last week, revised.
The most, that's supposed to be a change.
Mr. Chairman, I approve. By the change, student discipline.
Remove and seconded to revise student discipline policy, J D, uh, as presented. All in favor, say aye. Both. That's what cares. Okay, Paul? Still waiting for dinner, Rick, what?
Well, somebody else wants to do it. Let's wait till July because I want to get in on that. But they did.
Kind of deal is like if you want to participate in the dinner, you gotta do it twelve months.
Okay, I can do that.
All right, I don't think anybody could replace Paul. Yeah, I, you're here. All right, um, do you have anything else to say about region five?
I'm, um, I mean, I just attached it directly to the board, so. Part of having to do that.
Okay, what are your comments, charge?
Uh, first off, again, I'd like to thank the chairman for, uh, all his time and, uh, just putting the school in. Really appreciate that. Thank the, uh, principals for their input on the issues within their own schools. I think there's a lot more that goes on that we need to see on it, they, they need to see. So we appreciate the handle and that as it comes up. Like to thank each of the board members too for, for their dedication, I think, for the vision. Bill, thank you for keeping us straight.
Um, I have a. Russ, my dumb part is yours. All the kids going to stay trapped. Not freezing, not very excited, but snow, but I know very good. I'll be praying for the teachers for the next two weeks, hold out for the end of the year because we know the kids are really excited about. And they're at this point in time. Can't all the time that it's been so seamless.
So it's up to me now.
Yeah, that's all you have.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Copeland, for your years of service here. It's been a pleasure to work with you whenever we asked. And Melissa, thank you for your services as a nurse. And, uh, wish you both very well as you move down to that place. I said. I said. Not Tennessee, is it? For your family life, I just pray you're there as well, this new chapter. Thank you, Robin, for your words and, you know, and we're supposed to, all our decisions are based off of kids and other than that. And so we need this information so that we can be encouraged that, you know, we're doing well. Thank you, Noel, for your. Curriculum. That was a massive, as we get this new curriculum place. And, uh, just wish everybody a great summer. As you guys wind down. The rest of us come.
I would also like to thank, and you're welcome, Dr. Copeland, Mrs. Cooper, for all your efforts, all your work. I want to work with you and, uh, certainly wish you the best in this chapter as I actually work. I'd like to thank our host, Eric O'Browns, has been nice since my first time here. So it's a great decision to say. And, uh, I'd like to thank Dr. Williams for his generous donation as well. That was indeed very generous. Thank you, Robin, for the, the, uh, and, and the report. As Joe said, it's, uh, it's nice to have this information to help, but also be informed. So, um, uh, I really do appreciate that. It's good information. And Noel, uh, I've, I've said it before in the board meetings, uh, you did not go about this, uh, curriculum search. An easy way by any means. I think you did, uh, have a good way to represent stakeholder holders and, and address everybody's needs and try to make the best decisions for the district. And students, uh, and the teachers. So, uh, kudos to you for, for seeing it, Will. Thank you, everyone, for this, my, my. And then thanks to Sally, once again, uh, your work is incredible. A lot of work and effort into this, uh, these provisions to the salary benefits deal and, and support many avenues. Uh, and options and that was not easy and you made it very, very simple and easy for in-laws like me to understand. So, uh, I appreciate it, really. Thank you.
Uh, thank you to Elk Mountain School for hosting and all of the goodies and the flowers. Best wishes to Russ and, and Kim, for his meaningful service and to, uh, Jordan Gansey. Uh, welcome, Maura, Cherie, Stephanie, Kristen, baby, crazy. It's always nice to give a fill all these decisions, thousands, encouraging. Um, I wanna put a special shout out to the salary and benefits committee. Uh, we go out of time and, uh, I think we try to do what's best, but still what's in the realm of possibility, maybe. And of course, thanks for the school representatives and all of their input. And especially to James Sally and names for all of your extra time, uh, and all the extra spreadsheets and everything for us to, to take a look at all the different options that we've had. So, uh, good luck track. Um, thank you to all of the, I know we're not quite there, but we're in close. So thank you to all the students, teachers, admin, and staff for another successful school year. And congratulations to the participants and best wishes.
Uh, a lot of the same stuff. Thank you, Melissa, for letting Jim come out and play with us for as long as he did. I greatly appreciate it. You'll have to show me how to do that hook them orange thing. Um, congratulations to all the principals, the teachers, the kids who made it through another year, bus drivers, so on and so forth. Um, good luck and stay in track, everybody. Long handles. And like to thank the priest in advance for the prime rib barbecue that we're about to. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about next Monday. It's first of track day. Never actually made time because here I'm really, really scheduled around it now, it's five, it's can't supply time because I'm terrible. Um, I want to give a shout out to Parker Williams, who was a teacher at Saratoga Elementary School, who has not always been my favorite teacher in the district. And, uh, my son, Win, who's in fourth grade, I absolutely loved it, loved school. It helps that they do want to read history and all the counties. And he's absolutely, always tell me about all the stuff he loves and Ms. Boyd loves field trips and Win loves field trips and so. Uh, he has had a phenomenal year in fourth grade and I couldn't say enough about how well that's gone now and further in the years, the better that goes. And, uh, so I just want to thank him for his time. Um, J D, I want to thank you for having the courage. Know what you think is right about the cell phone. Joe said it's about the identification and it's not, uh, it's kind of hard to try out the curriculum. I mean, I'm excited about that. I know there has been some cool figures that love to math that, I mean, just, uh, having the right curriculum can, can make a difference. Congratulations come on up next weekend. I'm excited for that. I'll be part of a couple of them. So that's a lot of possibilities out there for the graduates. Exciting time.
I don't have much to add. Um, thanks, Paul, for being on the front board. Other than that, like did have everything else. I'm excited for the graduates, excited for graduation. Um, good luck to track. Sounds like there's been a lot of work behind the scenes in the last couple of months on budget and salary and benefits and curriculum. So thank you to all of you that have put in the hard work there. Um, it's great to see things moving forward. But also just like to touch on the cell phone, you know, sort of potentially not use of. Glad that we're having at least the discussions and making a conscious effort with the forward delivery of effort, whether or not we want to have, you know, those in the middle school. Yeah, thanks to Elk Mountain for hosting us and good luck. Dr. Copeland, Mrs. Cooper, appreciate you the best.
Okay, we are on the item thirteen, A.
Chairman, we will be going to executive session, discussing accepting or tendering offers concerning the benefits and other terms.
So I'm moving to second to go into executive session to discuss, uh, accepting or tendering offers concerning wage salaries, benefits, and other terms of employment. And to really specify it's about the salary and regulations, uh, just discussing that. There will be action taken, uh, after executive session, obviously. Talked about post salaries in the beginning of the session. Uh, can't get a motion. Okay, we already had a motion during executive session, sorry. All in favor going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay, we are going into executive session, classroom room number three.
Very good.
And you can say yes or no.
Yeah. I have to...
Yes, here.
The asking question is, "Do you want..." It's actually saying, "I don't want..."
No, I think you have to... Nobody wants to change.
Okay. As the chairman. Yep. I move that we come out of executive session and approve the minutes.
I give a second. It's been moved, seconded to come out of executive session and approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay. We are now out of executive session and the minutes are approved. We are on item 15A, which is to consider the salary benefits, community accommodations, updated revised salary schedules as presented, posted down attached over file 13.
I move that we approve the proposed salary adjustments for the 2022-2023 school year. Identify coming back from an attach of new 16 for certified staff, thirty five hundred dollar base increase. Okay. And then on classified staff, it will be a dollar seventy five. Step one, increase to all lanes. Substitute teacher pay will be at a hundred and twenty five dollars per day. And administrators, thirty five hundred dollars base pay increase.
Second. Movement seconded to approve the proposed salary adjustments that are attached. Highlight about thirty five hundred dollar base increase for certified and administrators, plus allowing step movements, dollar seventy five for classified staff and allowing step movements. And also to note the... Going ahead with the proposed option of the personal rate. Yes, so great. Any...
Insurance.
So I'd like to amend... Do I need to amend the motion to increase the insurance... Modification, health insurance, that the district will cover ninety five percent of health insurance and the employee will pay five percent of the premium.
So we have the personal rates and insurance, the step and thirty five hundred dollars.
And everything that's been presented on that, those are just highlights.
Second.
Second amendment.
Second issue. And we didn't, I don't know that we necessarily needed amendment because that was... Those were just highlights from the...
Okay. So just proposed.
The proposed salary adjustments. Those were just... Those are just some of the highlights.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chairman, I would stay.
I would stay also. Okay. Sounds good. Further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, most carries with the five, so that's still a majority of the nine. Six. I can't count.
You've got to do the move after.
I cannot, I can't be on that now. Okay. Do you have any more motions for us there?
Yes, I do. I move that we approve the same steps as on what was presented for the business manager. So the same steps as administration, administrators, and the base as the administrators.
That's it.
So it's been moved, seconded, business manager to allow a base increase and the same... Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thanks, Allen.
One more motion. Make a motion that we have the same base increase as presented for our incoming superintendent as previously agreed upon contract. That wasn't very good.
So the seconded to increase the superintendent offer by the same thirty five hundred amount.
Understood.
Well, there's... And the same kind of thing. I was a little confused on the business manager mentioned step, but there are... There's not...
To allow us to do the steps.
And not the superintendent.
So the business manager will report six. Superintendent, thirty five.
Thirty five. Thank you.
Because we're coming in on a new, new agreed upon contract. We want to increase that. It's just like if we were hiring a new teacher and they had... They thought they were going to get forty thousand five hundred. It's the same thirty five hundred dollars. Yeah. To allow that same increase on the base contract. All in favor of the superintendent?
Aye.
Closed. Okay. That is it for salary benefits recommendations. The next meeting will be Monday, June twentieth, six p.m. new time, central office.
Thank you.